Good evening, Garden City. I'd like to call to order our council workshop for Monday, April 8th, 2024 at 5:30 PM. Our first order of business is roll call.
Mayor Jacobs.
Here.
Mayor Protem Dole.
She's on her way, so she got caught in traffic.
Councilmember Charafotis.
Here.
Councilmember Squires.
Here.
Councilmember Earl.
Here.
Councilmember Witt.
Here.
Councilmember Lynch.
Here.
You have a quorum.
Thank you. Okay, we'll give Mayor Protem Dole a minute to get set here.
You have a quorum of seven.
Okay, so the workshop is going to be for discussion of the city ethics board. Couple of council members wanted to have this. So I will open up the discussion. Our city attorney, Mr. Bennett, is here. If you'd like to say anything to start with.
Okay, good evening, council. Drafted a proposed ordinance called the Board of Ethics Ordinance. It's based largely upon the Westland similar ordinance and the Attorney General's model municipal ethics ordinance. There are a number of discretionary considerations included in the ordinance that I put in there. I have to state, however, it is not the role of the attorney to set discretionary considerations. It is the role of the council. I put some considerations in here, some of them I did not put in here. Ultimately, I look for guidance from the council on what substantive issues you want covered in this ordinance, what substantive issues you do not want covered in this ordinance. Some substantive issues that are not covered in this ordinance are annual disclosure statements with respect to cities' contracts with private agencies. There is no anti-nepotism provision included in this ordinance, but that is something, again, that's within the council's discretion. Another thing that's not included explicitly is gifts, although there is a component in here that pertains to gifts. It's just, it's a, it's an overview or a rather loose and, loose and, uh... without, it's general in nature, it's not specific in nature, which can be good and bad in its own way. I mean, when I say it's not specific in nature, it doesn't have specific requirements with respect to dollar amounts of gifts and things like that. And finally, political activities of city officials, that is not covered in this ordinance. However, I don't believe it's necessary to include that. Again, if the council wants that in here, I will put it in here. However, it is already covered by the Political Activities by Employees Act, which is MCL 15.401 at SEC, and the Michigan Campaign Finance Act, which is MCL 169.201 at SEC. For that reason, I didn't put those in here, but if you want them in there, I can put that, put that in here. Does the council have any questions or comments for what I have drafted so far?
Mayor?
Councilmember Earl.
Just one, and I'll do this quick because this should be easy. Under 33-310B for membership quorum or confidentiality, it says members of the board may be removed by the mayor for cause. I'd like to see language that allows city council to have the same, just like we changed A. Well, I mean, if council has an issue with somebody and the mayor doesn't, I think the council should be able to bring it up and remove for cause as well.
I believe that should be a council consideration also.
Yeah.
I have no problem with that.
So we could just replace the word "mayor" with the word "council."
Okay. Thank you.
Anyone else?
I have some questions.
Councilmember Charafotis.
I know you used mostly the Westland one because that's what we brought up when we originally started talking about it. Did we look at any other cities' ordinances? Are they very different from what you've already prepared?
I just looked at Westland and the Attorney General's model ethics ordinance. You used both of these in compiling this.
And have you done this ordinance before for other cities?
No.
Is it used very often?
No.
Do we know the majority of the reasons that it gets used for?
I'm sorry?
Do we know the most common reason that we need this ethics board, like the most common thing that they do? Like, is it...
That would be, I guess, just for, to have an independent body to be able to conduct investigations and inquiries into certain ostensible questionable conduct by city officials.
So it's only elected officials, correct?
No, it's city officials. City officials is defined in the first section, pardon me, the second section of the ordinance, 3305. And that's something that we could discuss also.
Oh, so anybody on a board or commission?
Yes.
So it's us, then boards and commissions, and that's it?
Yes. Employees are excluded from this ordinance for the reason that, my understanding is that all employees of this city have a direct supervisor. And if the employee engages in conduct that is questionable, then the supervisor can deal with that. This is directed largely at people who are not accountable to anybody other than the council per se or the electors. And that's another discretionary consideration. I mean, we can include employees if you want them included, however, that might be a redundancy. Westland, I should note, does have that provision in there. It does cover city employees, but the remedy is limited to directing the accusation or the allegation of questionable behavior to that employee's supervisor. That's the remedy.
And we couldn't do it for union members anyway, correct?
That's correct because unions are governed by a collective bargaining agreement.
And then my other question is, in 33.345, the ethics board shall be permitted to adopt any additional rules, policies, and procedures not defined within this ordinance. Shouldn't that be with the approval of council?
Well, generally...
33.335, it says the ethics board shall be permitted...
335?
Yes.
345 or 335?
345.
Okay.
It says the board shall be permitted to adopt any additional rules, policies, and procedures not defined within this ordinance. Shouldn't that be at the discretion of council since we're approving all the rest of the stuff?
Well, it's up to the council to provide for the substantive criteria for the ordinance. This is more procedural. This would deal with how the board itself, and there's a lot of, there's a lot of parameters in here already for what the board may or may not do procedurally. But if the board feels like they need to do something different, they can do something, or they can do something supplementary to what's in the ordinance, but they can't do anything contradictory to what's in the ordinance. It is procedural only, it's not substantive. And that's not uncommon.
Okay. Any other questions? Mayor Protem Dole.
Councilwoman Charafotis asked a couple of mine already, but I am curious as to the procedures. So there's a couple of areas in here where it's talking about confidentiality. Is that something that we should have, we should have that procedure ready to go for this?
Don't know. I'm going to have to check.
Are you asking, like, if, regarding confidentiality? I'm sorry, Mayor.
So what is the process? What is the procedure? Because there doesn't appear to be one to maintain confidentiality for people that may file a complaint, that sort of thing. And it says that the board has to keep record. Where is that record going to be kept? How is that record going to be kept confidential? That sort of thing.
Okay, that would fall under the purview of the Freedom of Information Act. And if there is a provision in there for an allegation that is found to be unwarranted, that could be excluded from disclosure to a FOIA request on the nature that it's an invasion of that individual's personal business.
Yeah. That wasn't the way I was going.
I get the issue a little bit, I'm sorry. Is the public meetings? If the ethics board is a public meeting?
It's got to comply with Open Meetings Act.
So how do you keep a confidentiality? Like, who's the one that determines that it's the ethics board's discussion or not?
Well, that's a consideration too. Where I was really going, though, was more, they're keeping these records. Are the records electronic? Are they on, you know, where are they? Are they being kept in the city clerk's office? Who has access to them other than the board? That sort of thing is what I'm talking about, the actual physical records of complaints, of investigations, if warranted, that, that sort of thing. Where is that information going to be kept? And who would have access to it other than the committee? Because that committee isn't going to, they'll be like any of our other boards and commissions. They're not going to have an office here at City Hall, that sort of thing.
Correct.
I mean, do you understand what I'm asking now?
I think I, I think I get what you're getting at.
310E has the city clerk as liaison.
So all of the information would be kept in the clerk's office?
Yeah.
With the city clerk only having access to it as liaison or the, or the board itself? Is that what we're thinking?
I don't think so. Well, it makes sense that the clerk is the one that holds the records.
Yes.
But what makes it confidential? If it's a public meeting, it's Open Meetings Act, and it's, you can FOIA, what makes it confidential?
Well, there are exceptions to public meetings on what can be done. And one of them is if it's with respect to the discipline of an employee, the employee who's, I guess, the named employee, has the right to have that in a closed session if they want. That is a decision that rests with the employee and not with the council.
But what if it's one of us, let's say? So they say, okay, well, Stacy did something wrong. It's a regular meeting, and I'm not an employee. So, I mean, can those boards even go into closed session? What would be, I just don't understand why there's any confidentiality.
I guess my concern would be if you get the same person who, every week, files another complaint on somebody, and then they have to come here publicly, and all those complaints are absolutely inappropriate, not founded, garbage complaints, let's say. And I know you can't do an anonymous, anonymous one, you have to put your name to it. You know, at some point, the committee should be able to sit down and investigate it before they come to the, to the public board, shouldn't they? I mean, there has to be some legitimacy before you just start saying, this person's doing this, and it's not even completely true.
Right, that's what I mean. So if someone says, I make this complaint, this person did this, does the board investigate everything and then say, we have a meeting, this was brought up about this person, and this is what we found, it was untrue or it was true? Or does it all just start with the meeting and then it goes from there?
Well, it's multi-tiered, what the board can do. First of all, the board would have the power to summarily dispose of a matter if the request fails to state a violation or it's based upon, for lack of a better word, very flimsy evidence, like hearsay or circumstantial evidence that is not reliable. And the rules of evidence would determine whether or not something like that would apply. It could be used as a guideline, it's not a court of law, so the rules of evidence aren't going to officially apply, but they could be used in an advisory manner.
And you're right about that, but I guess the process that I got out of this, and I could be wrong, is that, let's see, John Smith puts in a complaint, the ethics board is meeting, and for the first time or whatever prior to, they get this complaint. All of a sudden, they're having to, off the top of their head, deal with this complaint. Or is it a case of, they get the complaint, everybody on the board using confidentiality gets the complaint prior to, and they can decide, complaint number one was unfounded, complaint number two, unfounded, complaint number three, we will take up and go through it like that at their meeting?
How can they figure out it's unfounded unless there's a discussion? And how can you have a discussion without being in a public meeting?
Yes, there's the pickle.
Yes.
There's the rope.
So my, I guess, could five individuals on this board meet? They're not setting policy, they're discussing a complaint, are they allowed to meet in closed door? To, because ultimately, some of it might be, we have to have the police chief investigate an aspect of it. You know, it, there could be, there's a lot of stuff to it, and as someone who's done law enforcement, you can't just say, hey, we got this complaint, we think you're stealing right now, you know? Somebody's going to have to be able to make a decision to go to the, to law enforcement or to go to whoever's responsible to help them investigate it. Because, you know, I'm sure, and whoever's on the board, they're not going to be trained investigators. Even if you have one trained investigator, you know, you still, somebody's going to have to be able to make those decisions. So I guess the question is, can they do that in a closed meeting? And...
Even...
I kind of envisioned, they, it's investigated, they determine whether or not it's worth to bring forward, and then they bring it forward publicly. And when they do that, they have to bring forward the person who made the complaint, the person who the complaint is against, and why they think it is done.
Yeah, that, that's a matter within the purview of the board. If they want to look at it and say, look, this, this calls for further investigation, they can do that in the matter set forth in the ordinance. Or they can summarily say, well, we look at this and it said, you know, my Aunt Betty told me that her friend, and her friend's aunt, whose son told her this. I mean, that's, that's a little too remote to...
But how can they have that discussion?
Can they have that discussion?
Not in an open meeting, that's, that's the question.
It's going to have to be in an open meeting.
And there isn't confidentiality.
So I guess, if the committee's three people instead of five, could they have that discussion?
If the committee is what?
Three people instead of five, could they have that discussion?
They could have that discussion, however, to take action under this ordinance. What is required is a majority of the board itself and not a majority of a quorum. For example, if only three of the five members showed up for a meeting, all three would have to take unanimous action because that would be, three would be the majority of five. It wouldn't be two because that's, that's a majority of the quorum of three. You need a majority of the members of the board itself.
Right, and how could they have discussion unless they couldn't make any motion on it? Because there wouldn't be the majority. So they couldn't make that decision if it was a flimflam thing?
I guess, you know, I'm leaving, so this isn't really going to do much to me. But in the future, you know, if you get somebody who just thinks it's funny just every week to file a complaint on one person they don't like, even though their complaint is completely, you know, unjustified, that could put whoever is on the board, you know, in unfair advan...
We've had people come up to the podium every single week and harass other people. I mean, that's happened.
So I guess a possibility, council, might be if seven people are appointed and three is the committee, your executive committee, that's not a quorum, that those three decide...
They couldn't decide.
They could decide which cases are further.
Which cases go further that are legitimate?
How could they make that decision if there's not a quorum?
No, they're not a quorum. They're just the committee, it's like a committee of a council.
Oh, I got you.
So that seems to be the only way to circumvent the...
So the week before, they get together, go through them and figure out, these are frivolous, these are not? These go to the files?
But how, how, those three are still not going to be able to investigate. I mean, we, we need somebody that can actually...
Well, they can ask the question because they're just a committee. To the city, I believe, you know, the police chief, if there's a question.
Yeah, it did say police chief.
Just like if three of us...
Yeah. They can meet and then at least, I mean, they have to be the most trusted three, obviously, for the fact that they decide forward or backwards. Now, if they decide to push something forward appropriately, the rest are going to throw it out, obviously, when the committee gets together. So hopefully that they'd be as legitimate as possible. An error on the side of caution as opposed to just push everything through.
So obviously, if anybody's name comes up, it's because someone believes they've done something incorrect, right? So if we go with this seven-member board, a three-member, more or less, executive board, whatever you want to call it, where they can, where they review their requests and decide which ones have merit to move forward, at that point, can the board then notify that person? And that person is given the opportunity to request a closed session, so it never has to go out in the open?
We're not employed.
Does it work that way?
We can't do a closed session. What would happen? How I see it is, the three-person committee, if they look at it and say, okay, this might have some merit, I think we should look at it, then they have to pull a public hearing, they have to have all seven members. The chairman or whoever of the committee will present it to the board. I envision that the person who the complaint is against could be there to speak to it. And they could also have to offer up a chance for the person who made the complaint to be there to speak to it. All that would have to be done publicly. So once it's determined that this needs to go forward, and at that public meeting, the board may say, contact the police for further investigation. They could say, okay, this is what we think happened, we vote to send it to the council for, you know, this action, whatever, whatever it could be. But at, at that point, it's got to be public, and that person being accused has to have a chance to speak on it. And the, and the person who's making the accusation has to have a chance to speak on it, is how I would imagine, to keep it all legitimate and transparent.
Well, I read through Westlands, and I started reading through, although I know it's a much larger city, but the city of Detroit has quite a comprehensive ordinance on this. And I'll be completely honest, I've gotten a little confused as to which one was in which. But did we have it in ours where the board has the opportunity to consult the city attorney?
Yes, but I'm going to tell you, I am going to be extremely leery of any complaints that are directed at any council members. I cannot put myself in a position where I'm going to be in a conflict of interest. I represent the council as a whole, not any individual council member. But for the reason that I affect, I represent the council as a whole, I'm not going to be involved in a situation where I have to investigate my own client. So I'm going to tiptoe lightly here. I'm not going to be put in a position where I'm creating, where I'm put into a position of, even the appearance of a conflict of interest. I just, I honor and value my oath, and I am not going to violate it.
Okay, well, how does Westland do this, then?
I don't know the answer to that.
They have a strong mayor situation, so a little different, I think, the way they, they work over there.
Well, their city attorney is still representing the council, is he not?
I don't know. In a strong mayor situation...
The city attorney in Westland can do whatever they are comfortable with. I'm telling you, I am not going to...
I understand that, and I can't imagine any attorney being comfortable with that.
So who would they ask legal questions to?
They could ask me legal questions, but I am not going to be involved in investigating or recommending action against my own client.
No, I understand that, but I'm seeing if, if they don't understand the law, could they reference you and say...
They can ask me general legal questions, yes.
310E has just mentioned, should a complaint rise to a greater level, an outside special counsel may be contracted.
Okay.
So there would have to be somewhat of a slight budget, I guess, for this, this board. As we have a little budget for each board, not much, but we might have to have a little more in case that they need an outside opinion.
So, would I be considered correct if something, let's say, for a council member came forward, the committee of three looked at it and said, this is a possibility? And they were to contact you as the attorney, and you said, go talk to the police chief? The police chief could then look at it, do whatever he needed to do, and say, I think it needs to go farther than that, and you need to get another attorney to handle it?
Yes, special counsel.
Right, okay.
So here's the issue. You can't even go to, we couldn't even go to the attorney and say, hypothetically, we have a council member who may be stealing from whatever, and that's all hypothetical, right? He doesn't want to hear that because that put him in a conflict right there.
Right.
Because he's got to represent. So if it ever comes down to a legal issue, then I would say, he's the no-go on anything. You go to the special counsel that's assigned to that committee. So in totally outside of the purview of their lawful...
You'd want to hire a special counsel prior to?
Just to be on...
Okay.
Attain, yeah.
Special counsel wouldn't, yeah, special counsel wouldn't necessarily have to be an attorney. Could be a retired police chief or something like that.
Oh, okay, okay.
But, like I said, I got a, I got a...
Who's a lawyer?
I got to honor my oath.
Almost, almost retired.
Councilwoman Squires.
Have you contacted or talked to people in Westland about theirs? And how many cases might they have had?
I have not.
I did.
No.
And they said most of them were bogus.
And they prob, yeah, I expect that they will be. But I do know that, just doing some searching on the internet, that there are a heck of a lot of cities that have a board of ethics. So, you know, I thought that it's probably best that we have something in place, and I don't know, maybe this needs a little bit more fine tuning at this point?
I am all ears. I am all ears. I want, like I said, discretionary matters are for the council, not for the attorney. I put some stuff in here, I didn't put some stuff in here, but that's not my decision. That's for the council.
I have another question. It says, no city official shall promote themselves or personal business or any other business verbally. And it says, while acting as a city official. I mean, we, we have, all of us have sat up here and said, oh, this tree service I used was great. I mean, how is that a violation if you're, you're talking about Garden City businesses?
It was darn comments.
You know what I'm saying? Why should that be bad?
What's, I believe there's a provision in there that states that, or it limits that to only if the speaking council member would personally benefit from this. What number was that?
Right, that, that's five. That's what I'm saying, it's, it's not a benefit to us if you're wearing sports venue t-shirt while you're going to, you know, something, or someone says, hey, I had this company at my house, they did a great job today. So that's what I'm saying, that wouldn't be, I don't want somebody to get accused saying, oh, they're getting extra off their bill because they said, you know, said my name at a council meeting or something like that.
Right. I mean, if, if you said, if you went to a tree services set, I'll mention you on my council meeting, if you give me 50 bucks off, that's a big violation.
That's another story.
But I couldn't, I couldn't use my platform to say, you should go to my wife's Facebook page and purchase...
That's right.
This that she's selling.
Right, but what I mean is, I don't want someone to think that. So if Pat says, I use this great tree company, and I wrote the name down, she gave me the name, I don't want someone else to come back and say, oh, she was promoting a business, maybe she shouldn't have. That's what I'm saying.
She's not getting a financial benefit from it?
Someone to be a key to that, is what I'm saying, because we said that.
But then, well, if it went that far, then the board would look at it, I would imagine, and say, this is, this has no merit.
Unfortunately, in this day and age, that's something that, you bring up a good point. That everybody gets offended, everybody, in this day and age, you can't say anything.
That's what I'm saying, we put it in the, in the buzz. The mayor says, hey, try these three businesses.
Right.
How do, you know, what if somebody who doesn't like the mayor says, oh, well, he mentioned these three businesses and not mine? I think there's something to that. You know what I mean?
But that would come back to you not getting any kind of benefit from it, states? And the board would just throw it out.
I understand that, but I'm just saying, that may be a lot of...
Can I, can I hear your question again?
So, like, we, he has then, a handout that goes out to everybody in the water building, it's called the Buzz, and it has the mayor's corner, and he talks about three different businesses every month. And so he's just going down the line. I know that he's not doing it because that business is giving him free cookies or whatever, but that's what I'm worried about. If someone's promoting something because they think it's a great Garden City business, then someone's going to be like, oh, he shouldn't be doing that because I read it in here that, oh, maybe he's getting, you know, free drinks or free cookies or whatever. That's what I mean.
Okay, well, if, that's, that would be a factual inquiry. If, if somebody was deriving a personal benefit from, I guess, for lack of a better word, advertising for a third party, that would be a matter for investigation. If, only if there is a personal benefit to the person who was speaking. And I should also state that nothing in this is intended to preclude any council people from promoting their own business except for while they're at a public meeting.
Sure.
You know, that just, that wouldn't make much sense to, I mean, people, people promote their business, you know? I, I have a webpage, I promote my business.
Just can't do it at the meeting?
Exactly.
Well, that would be promoting the business, though. So if you happen to own a business and you're having an event there where there's nothing for sale, lucky dog. They've got kids reading to dogs. That's, there's no financial benefit to the business owner for that, so it's, you know...
The free community event.
Again, that would be something that would have to come to the board, correct? come to the board, correct, and the board would make a determination, or?
These inquiries are gonna be factual, specific. I mean, it's, and that's, that's how it is in all of law. I mean, you have to look at not just the law, you have to look at the application of the law to a given set of facts. So, it's a very fact-specific inquiry. It would depend a lot on context.
I have another question. No city official shall, thirteen is found guilty of a misdemeanor felony, obviously, we don't want someone to be, what if someone gets drunk driving? So, does that automatically come before the board? I mean, that's that person's personal business, and it doesn't really have anything to do with council.
If a person gets, I've thought about this, and if a person gets a drunk driving ticket, should that be investigated?
No.
You don't think so?
I think that's it. Do I think that if someone else on this board got drunk driving ticket, that it's gonna affect their thing as a council? No, that's kind of their personal business.
Okay, well, I can tell you, one of the criteria for removal of a council member by the governor from office, and only the governor, under certain procedures, can remove a council member, other than the electors, one of them is habitual drunkenness.
I totally agree. I wouldn't wanna sit next to someone that was drunk all the time either, but I'm just asking these questions because, I mean, what other things are, I don't mean him. What, what other? I'm just giving examples, like.
That's, that's a perfectly logical question.
And, well, like, say this, when I started Lucky Dog, they, someone complained about the barking, and it went to the court, and the court never notified me, and I never went. And it was like, it was already approved that we were there, but they didn't know it, and they issued a warrant for a misdemeanor, and the police chief had to call me and said, are you driving anywhere? And I said, no. He said, well, don't go out today until I get this strained out, but there's this bench warrant for you. And I was like, what? And he straightened out, and that was it. So, if something, that's what I'm saying, if it's just.
That had to be rather unsettling.
It was. I mean, it was right after opening, and I was like, what do you mean, there's a bench warrant for me? For a barking dog. So, that's what I'm saying. If, I don't know what other things are misdemeanors, I just thought of drunk driving because that's not a felony, right, so?
It can be. Third offense would be a felony. It's, I'm just, like I said, these are discretionary considerations. If you wanna limit this to felonies, or the criteria that are set forth in the election law for removal of a council, elected council member, I can do that, too. Change it from misdemeanor felony to add the criteria that's in the election law.
Well, even like monetary crimes that might be plea bargain down a misdemeanor or whatever, that, I mean, there are certain things that should be included, you know, and certain things that shouldn't be included, so, yeah, yeah.
I know recently, we just changed a couple of the ordinances where they were misdemeanors, and now they're not. So, I mean, depending on the city you're in, you could, you know, get some little tiny thing that ends up being a misdemeanor, too, that's not, you know, a major issue.
But there's certain things you can't change down to a civil infraction. They, we can't take, and this is an extreme example, we can't take murder and say, eh, Garden City, it's just a misdemeanor. Like, you can't change things like that. So, you know, the things that are, were changed were more ordinance-type situations.
Yeah, but I mean, say, you know, obviously, we all own houses in the city. You know, if it was like lawn grass we had at the time was a misdemeanor, if you got so far that you kept getting infractions, like stuff like that, where it's, you know, a basic little thing that could potentially ruin.
Should we, what are some of the examples you said that's, that's on there for removal?
Is guilty of official misconduct, willful neglect of duty, extortion, habitual drunkenness, convicted of being drunk, or wherever it appears, by a certified copy of the judgment of the Court of Record, that a city officer has been convicted of a felony. So, it would be guilty of official misconduct, willful neglect of duty, extortion, habitual drunkenness, convicted of being drunk, and don't ask me to explain that, that's right in the statute, I'm reading it verbatim, or whenever somebody's convicted of a felony.
Convicted of being drunk is probably like drunken disorderly, probably.
Well, dude.
Or, you know, you can't be, you could be drunk.
Being drunkenness is not a crime in itself, or being drunk.
But attaching it to something else.
Yes.
Like a drunk driving.
Drunk driving, or drunk and disorderly, you know.
Yes.
Which a lot of times, it'll get knocked down to something else, and that's the thing, too. It's not what you're accused of.
What you're convicted of.
What you're convicted of, if you're convicted, or agreed to.
Any other questions?
I would like to see us have at least a minimum, some criteria for the board members, instead of just.
On this particular issue, felony or misdemeanor?
No, no, I mean, for the board itself, when we appoint the board members.
Okay.
Were you asking for questions specific to that issue that we were just speaking about?
So, eligibility requirements to be a member of the board?
I, yes.
Like, not a felon?
I'm sorry, what'd you say?
I said, if they're gonna hold us to that same thing, so, if you're gonna be a board member, you shouldn't be a felon.
So, somebody not convicted, some?
Someone not convicted of a felon.
Not convicted of a felony?
Or possibly in some particular line of work, you know, that where they might've had some kind of, not necessarily training in this, but I'm going brain-dead here, what I want, the type of.
Well, the five people that are trained to investigate and all, it's gonna be difficult, but like I said, if someone bondable, someone who could qualify for. Yeah, I mean, we, I don't know how to put it.
Yeah, usually, somebody who's been convicted of a misdemeanor does not qualify for a bond.
Right.
And that's even a misdemeanor. I convicted somebody in Canton Township of a zoning ordinance violation, which was a misdemeanor, and that person said, well, I lost my bond because of this conviction. Told him, well, you were offered something that could protect your record prior to trial, you liked, did it have a trial?
Any other criteria?
Obviously, city resident, I would assume, same as all, all our other boards and commissioners.
So, you want not convicted of felony, city resident? Is there anything else? A certain age requirement?
No, I don't think so.
No, I think it'd be good to have the diversity of the age on a board, if people are willing to do it.
Over twenty-one?
Well, over eighteen. I would say voting age, if you're gonna do that.
Being at twenty-one? What is the council's pleasure on that?
Twenty-one.
I think twenty-one gives you a few more years of maturity.
Experience.
I mean, I, just my thought is voting age.
Not related.
Eighteen.
Yeah, not related.
My thought is drinking age.
Not related?
To anyone on?
Obviously, not related. I think it says that in here. Doesn't it say in here, they're not related to anybody on?
Yeah, I remember reading it.
I'm just looking to see if maybe they have some stuff in this one.
Yeah, there can be conflict of interest.
So, they're processing a request through your office, and not going to the board first?
No, no.
That's what it says.
That's a mistake. It should be processed through the clerk's office, not the lawyer's office.
Okay.
I'll make that change.
It says the process to forward a request to the city attorney's office, but he just said, we're not doing that.
Yeah, it would be thirty-three, three-thirty, processes to refer it across to, that should be the clerk's office, not the city attorney's office.
Yes.
Now, when we talk, I'm sorry to skip around, but to go back to the eligibility requirements for membership, not related to any member of the city council, is that what I heard?
Or commission, or anybody, right?
Well, I think that's covered under the conflict of interest part of the ordinance, isn't it?
Right, but that board is gonna be able to judge people that's on the planning commission, so they shouldn't be related to the planning commission.
No, no.
Yes, it is, it's board commission.
Yeah, I know, that's what I'm saying. No, they shouldn't be.
Shouldn't be related to anybody on a board or commission, right?
Counsel.
If they were, they'd have to accuse himself.
Yeah.
Right, you got.
It could come, it might come up.
Yeah, if you have somebody on the, if you have somebody on the ethics committee, then they, they have a cousin who's an outstanding person, who we really want on another board, they can re, if anything happens against that person, that one person that has a conflict can.
So, we're not gonna say?
So, recusal, you know, you wanna recusal standard in here also?
Yes.
Yes. Garden City's not that big with, what, seven or eight boards that we have to?
Right, right.
It appears the planning commission does not have to be a Garden City citizen.
Why not? They're making the plans for Garden City, they should be.
Looking at the ordinance.
I didn't hear what.
It says the planning commission doesn't have to be a resident of Garden City. We need to change that, then, because if you're planning Garden City's future, you need to live here.
Which I don't think there's ever been somebody who was a Garden City resident.
I think there was, a long time ago.
I think you're right.
That's a long time ago.
Is the planning commission a consultant for Garden City?
They're the ones that bring stuff to us.
The planning commissioner is a consultant, the planning commission, the planner is a consultant.
The planner, not the planning commissioner.
Yes, the planner is a consultant, the commission should be comprised of residents.
So, we'll have to make that change, then.
Well, that would be.
I don't think anybody realized that it didn't say that.
Yeah, I don't see it.
They couldn't find qualified people that understood building and.
I think right now, they're all, I think right now, they're all residents.
Yeah, absolutely.
Wasn't it the construction board review? There was something where we had outsiders. Cause there you're looking at for construction.
Yes, that one you can't.
That one was allowed.
If you can give me one minute, I can tell you what the state statute says, Planning Enabling Act. That members of a planning commission shall be qualified electors of the local unit of government, except that the following numbers, number of planning commissioners may be members who are not qualified electors. Three in a city that had a population of more than twenty-seven hundred but less than twenty-eight hundred, two in a city or village has a population of less than five thousand, one in local units of government, other than those described in subdivisions A and B. So, it sounds like one member of the planning commission under state law does not have to be a locally elector.
Okay.
No point, you mean?
Does not have to be, but can be.
Yes.
Um, going back to this, is there something in here that provides that members of the Board of Ethics are required to keep things confidential?
Well.
I mean, is it they can't be going and, you know, hey, you know, having a beer with the neighbor and talking about?
Right.
That would be a discretionary thing, but what I was leery of is running afoul of the, either the Open Meetings Act or the Freedom of Information Act. I don't wanna put anything in here that's gonna be, that conflicts with state law, because.
Could it be until it's brought to the public board?
You said if we have an executive committee, and those three people are talking about it, and they come up with something that says, listen, this has no weight or bearing, this guy just made this up about this person.
I don't know that that can be done, because the Open Meetings Act applies to all public bodies, including commissions of public bodies and boards of public bodies. So, we gotta be real leery about that.
Then how are they having the discussion if it's supposed to be open meeting?
They would have to have it in an open meeting.
We just talked about that, and you said you didn't.
The three.
The executive committee. They can meet in the conference room.
Lucky there was three of us.
Yeah.
The week before, three people on the executive committee go in, take all of the ones that.
I'm gonna have to look into that.
Okay.
Yeah, as long as it's less than four, I think we'll be, put this up for.
Again, what I was talking about is a member of the board divulging confidential information to anyone that is not supposed to have that information outside of the Freedom of Information Act. I'm talking about, yeah, you go have a barbecue with your neighbor the next day, and you go, hey, you know what I heard about Councilwoman Smith? And they're on the Board of Ethics, and they're talking just in general to people. There should be some level of confidentiality expected from them outside of, I mean, anybody can FOIA. Once you FOIA or anything else, or come to an open meeting, that's, that's different. But I'm talking about, there should be some level of confidentiality expected from them, you know, from, to, talking about it to people that should not possess that information at that time for any reason.
I will work on that. I mean, everything is a delicate balance here.
For sure.
If nothing else, they can be removed for cause.
Exactly.
If they're being unprofessional.
Well, that's true.
They can be yanked for cause.
Is it possible to put a timeframe in this, too?
It is, it says that they have to do it within a hundred and twenty days.
Statute of limitations.
No, 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 how far back?
I'll figure out where that is.
You can't go back.
John Smith can't come up and say, you know what, I know this happened a year ago.
It's already in there.
Where?
Where's the part that talks about, it has to?
I thought that was how long they had to review something.
I didn't know there was a statute.
Oh, I was looking at the hundred and twenty days of the request.
Or should there be? Or should it only date back to when they take office, or?
Well, they would have.
I would say it was, I know, I think.
When the final draft is.
But to do so, right, but I'm pretty sure that.
No, but what Pat is saying is when the board starts.
Yeah, when the board actually starts.
I think Westland has a date in there, so they can't.
You're saying if I stole a thousand dollars a month ago, and the board starts in a month, they couldn't go back and say that?
For some people.
Never had it before, but.
Right, I know, I'm in line with you.
I don't know why, I mean, none of us. I think if you start putting language like that in there, then.
Well, that's true, or they didn't find out about it till then.
Use that.
I know, I know they have it in there, but.
You're uncomfortable, you know, if, if somebody finds out that two years ago, I stole the water fountain, which obviously I didn't, you know, and they wanna, they wanna bring a complaint on that, they should bring a complaint on it, so.
Yeah, for.
Yeah, it goes back to the morality of it.
Yeah.
So, no, no statute, no statute of limitations. If you're in, if you're in office or on a board.
Right.
They could go back as long as you're on, on that board or on that council.
Right.
Another thing I wanted to point out was, the remedies for a found violation, for example, if the Board of Ethics finds a violation by a city official, the Board of Ethics itself has no power to do anything.
Right, it's all to us anyway.
Yes, the city council will retain ultimate control over whatever discipline will be administered, and what the Board of Ethics can do is make recommendations and findings of fact on their investigation to the council, but ultimately, it's a council decision.
However, if, if during the investigation, they deem that they have to contact law enforcement, they've made a decision to take it.
If there is something that is egregious enough to warrant investigation by the Attorney General or the Department of State Police, then that would take on a separate life.
Yeah.
It would be outside of the purview of this ordinance.
Okay, yep.
Okay, any other questions for the attorney?
The only thing I'm gonna recommend is, tonight, under B, we're probably gonna wanna postpone it again, because it sounds like there's a lot of work to be done with, with the attorney.
It's better to get it right than to get it done fast.
Right.
Yes.
I agree.
Except the attorney, not counting B three.
Oh, that would be under the action items.
Yeah, just remove B three from the agenda in the beginning of the meeting.
Yep, so, so what I would do is, if we wanna let the city attorney, you know, fine-tune it before it comes up, when we make the motion to approve the agenda, approve it with the exclusion of agenda item B three.
Do that, do that.
Yep.
During the meeting. Okay. Make sure to do that. Do we have anything else for the attorney on this? Okay.
I'll draft my best ordinance and give it to you next time, and like I said, I don't, feel free to speak freely and brusquely, I don't take anything personally.
Okay.
Hardly anything, almost, almost, I see, I can see all of his brain going like that.
Okay, item four is our public comment for non-agenda items only. Anybody wishing to speak on non-agenda items? Okay, then, this meeting is adjourned, and we'll meet back here in thirty minutes. Okay, then this meeting is adjourned, and we'll meet back here in thirty minutes.
Sounds good.